Hi, this is Charles X White again. On our special edition of Community Views and Solutions. We're talking about the local election for 2019. We're talking about the national election for 2020 and the primary. This special series as well as the census for 2020. This is a very serious set of months from right now until the census is completed. We are going to focus on candidates at the national and local level. We're going to talk about voices, votes, and why they count with the census. Both ways, election and census. We're going to talk about political codes and how you need to be aware on that particular aspect of the language of coding in politics. The premise that we work from and we'll be working from is tax-based service delivery. We're not dealing with personalities. We're not necessarily dealing with race, even though it's all encompassing. We could spin it this way, we're going to spin it that way. But we want to anchor on tax-based service delivery, the haves and the have-nots, and how does this system actually work? We're going to include a piece on Houston, transitional Houston, and Black Houston. Because they are separate and not equal. There was a report done in 1968 authorized by Lyndon Baines Johnson. And it was the Kerner Commission Report. And the Kerner Commission Report, they had to study what the riots in the 60s and early 70s. And one of the findings they found about that situation, what went into making that happen, was there were two Americas, separate and unequal. One black, one white. And they came back 50 years later to review the study to compare then and now. And what they found, that there are two Americas. One black, one white, and that includes Houston. Our guest for this segment is a local warrior preacher, all-around guy, who I met in the 80s when he was young in the ministry and so was I.
Absolutely.
And he was out marching downtown Houston at Houston National Bank. Some of y'all don't even remember Houston National Bank, I believe it was. And he was out there with a sign talking about fair housing back then. With a sign and a few people. So I went and said, "That brother needs some help."
That's right.
And brought some of my folks and we was out there with him.
That's exactly right.
Trying to make sure nothing happened to him.
That's right.
This is Reverend Dr. Willie Davis, who's running for city council. And don't let the Reverend Doctor fool you.
Absolutely.
See, some people forget, they talk about Jesus as a lamb. But then some people talk about Jesus as a lion.
That's right. That's right.
I digress.
That's okay.
Well, we want to know, what makes you the man for the job for city council at large? District two?
Yeah, position number two.
Position number two? Introduce yourself to the audience before we get into this dialogue on what makes you you.
Okay, well, first of all, let me open up by saying, not only do I thank you, Brother Charles X White, for today, but I want to thank you for the years back in the 80s. When we needed some troopers, of course, both of us had a lot more hair and we were a lot thinner and all those little things. And we had a lot more energy too.
Yeah. I go to bed at seven o'clock in the evening.
But let me just say, first and foremost, the reason why I'm running is because, number one, I'm a native born Houstonian, 3rd Ward Texans. And I was in this city all my life. Not only was I raised and reared in this city, educated in this city, went to college from this city, went into the Army during Vietnam and served with attached to the Special Forces Green Beret. Came back home, worked again in the city, raised my children in this city, and then became a pastor in this city for now over 33 years. I've seen this city of old and I've seen Houston of new. And the problem is that what I have done is looked at it from the standpoint of a pastor, as a servant leader, as a community leader. I've been involved in everything known in this city to mankind, what makes Houston what it is. I love my city. One thing about Houstonians, we love our city.
That's right.
Now, you know that as well as a Houstonian. And we know we have a lot of people who've moved into this city who don't know the history of this city. Now with that, I've been a servant on both sides, like you said, in the community and in the church. So the one thing I do know, I know about serving. I know what it means to serve. There's a difference between a person sitting in a seat with a suit on than a servant sitting in a seat serving the community. And the problem is, Charles, is just that we're not getting service and servants to our city. You don't have to be a politician to serve your city. All you got to do is to be a willing worker. And that's what we've been missing, Charles. We're not getting people to serve our community as it should be. And that's what I want to do. I have no intentions of trying to be anything congressman, senator, and all that. That's not my thing. My thing is, I serve a constituency that are members parishioners. And with that, I also serve my community. And because of that, I'm responsible to the furthering of our city. I'm very responsible for that as a pastor and as a taxpayer and one who loves my fellow man. And so, I don't like the way Houston's looking. We got a lot of problems, Charles. And mind you, the problems are getting larger as well as the city's getting larger. So I think we need to put a foot in place to get some of these things changed.
Well, give us a, now, at-large...
Yes.
Means that you would be a city council member representing all of citizens.
Absolutely.
All of the citizens of Houston. Historically, in the Black community and other communities as well, that is a little murky as far as how it rolls out, how it works. Because I've seen in the past where council members try to cut out a territory or if they have a district council, they want to have other council members at large to like have permission to come into their district as though they don't have a right to represent the citizens of that district. Now, to the audience, this is part of peeling that onion or talking about political codes.
Absolutely right.
Sometimes said, political courtesies. An at-large, an at-large city council member has just as much right to hold town hall meetings?
That's right.
And district councils?
That's right.
In any district in that's serving Houston, under the banner of the City of Houston.
That's exactly right.
Any, any district.
Any district.
Now, how would you navigate going in and out of a district? How would you navigate if a council member tried to say that you have to have permission and I got to have, you have to have their blessing to have a meeting in that district? How will you address that?
Thank you, Charles. And that's a very important point you make because one of the things that I've discovered during the campaign, and most of the time when I go across a city campaigning, most of the people will generally ask the question. We would be shocked to know that there are a lot of constituents and citizens in Houston don't even know the governmental structure. They don't know the difference between the fact of having a district council member and in that lodge. They don't even know it. They don't know that they have another means by which they can reach somebody in their particular districts if they need something done. So how I would navigate that, being an at-large position member of council, is I would build a communication with every district council member in this city and get them, have them to understand. Because the charter specifically states the role of the district council member and the role of the at-large. And it's not an either-or, it's both together. And so, for some reason, over the years, and you know this a lot well as I do, the politics of old in this city from city council was not like that. That was not the attitude. For over the years of administration and mayor-orial leadership, it's been this divide. And that is a problem for our city. So the at-large council members need to make sure that they communicate with the district council member and let them know, "We're in this together." The city voted for the at-large people overall. District council people are voted out of their district. And so I think it would be beneficial that all five of us at-large work together with these districts, and that's another problem right there. See, if I go to a district and there's a situation there and I want to hold it, then I'll include the other five at-large because they represent the area as well. So what, we should not have that kind of an issue in our city.
Well, the reason I wanted to bring that out is because it also happens on the national and state level.
Absolutely.
As well as the county. Now, to the audience, when city council takes a vote, every district council member votes on other district council members' issues.
That's exactly right.
So District K is voting on District B, C, H, and I?
That's exactly right.
All the rest of the district councils?
You're absolutely right, Charles.
The at-large members are voting on all of those district matters?
That's right.
As well as the at-large matter? Am I right about that?
You're absolutely correct.
Now, so that's when we say that they have a right by charter and by title, that they can go into any district?
Any district.
And if you are not getting service from your district council member, you can call five other at-large council members to get that issue resolved.
You're so right.
Now, one of our previous guests alluded to the fact that they also have like $750,000 in these districts. Is that the same for the at-large?
No, the at-large are exempt from having a budget of that size. We only have a $400,000 operation budget, which takes care of staff and other little incidents.
So the district council members have a $400,000 budget for staff as well as the $750,000 budget?
Absolutely, absolutely.
So, for an example, in District B and D, a major consistent staple issue that I know of from 1986 to '90 is heavy trash and trash. Old tires and the like. So the district council member said, "We're going to put up cameras." But the people are still waiting on the cameras and so on and so on. In '86, and I'm saying this as a point benchmarking time, we talked about using dummy cameras to fool the trash dumpers. But the excuse from the city and the police then is the same now. And the dumping is still happening in the same places with new places, but mostly the same places it was in '86. How, and remember now, one of our key premises is tax-based service delivery, the neglect, the malpractice, or the underserved.
Absolutely.
Because we have 27 major zip codes that have been identified by the city as underserved. So it's not like we don't know where the underserved are.
We know exactly where it is.
And we know what ethnic group it is.
That's right.
And we know why.
That's right.
So now, we got food deserts in those zip codes.
Absolutely.
We don't have job, new job creation in those zip codes.
Absolutely.
Schools closing in those zip codes.
Absolutely.
And those subdivisions.
Absolutely.
Of a blue class that's been a forgotten class.
Absolutely.
And it been forgotten for over 20 years. So no, it's not a neighborhood full of seniors. It's a mixed neighborhood now.
That's right.
Now, even in, if you go back to the creation of the city of Houston and the four, the five wards, people lived all over in all the wards with all ethnic groups at that time.
Absolutely.
So what I want you to elaborate on is tax-based service delivery deficiency. What would be one of your items that you would try to, and how would you discern, what would you try to address as having a dual role as an at-large city council member that represents Black, White, Hispanic, I don't care where you live, whatever, you represent everybody?
I represent them all.
So how would you try to deal with the disparities?
Well, the first, one of the first thing I would do, which is what I plan to do when I get on city council, is number one, is to address the fact that we spoke about earlier. Just think about what you just said. Now, if you got five at-large council members and positions at-large, all five of those ought to be concerned about that trash issue in District D or District B or District K. Why would five at-large have no involvement at all? We have, the opponent that I'm running against has no involvement with none of those districts with the issue sitting on council knowing that trash. You think trash is in G? You think trash is in A? No. So the reality of it is this, I would advocate that we as the five at-large from that position, that we make sure that all of those districts, no matter what, who they are and where they are, that all services are done. What's going on in D and in B and K may not be going on in A or C or...
But the trash is also in H and I?
Absolutely.
Particularly?
Particularly. And so, that's a problem. Now, how is it that the mayor position not understand that or not dealing with that? And the reason being is because we don't have enough voice coming from the at-large people. This divide that comes about need to end. And that's one of the things I intend to stop. I intend to bring a unified front to city council. And just based on what you just talked about and dealing with all of the districts, we got five at-large people that are sitting there. We shouldn't be sitting there just drawing a minimal paycheck because that's not what we're there for. We're there to serve the entire city. And whatever hurts D, you know, if it's hurting D, it ought to hurt everybody. And so, we've got to deal with this trash issue. I said, I went to every CIP. Now, I was, during the year, as you know, every district has a CIP.
What is CIP?
The CIP is the capital improvement plans that every district have. So since I knew I was running for at-large, I made it my objective, starting from January all the way up to sometime around June when they ended, I actually went to every CIP. You know why? Because I wanted to know what is the problem in every district in this entire city, along with the mayor? Because that's the role of the at-large position. The at-large position is to know what the problems are. And so, if you're sitting at an at-large seat and you're not concerned with only one area that you live in, if you happen to live in C and you only given notice to C and you never show up in B or D or K or any others, then you're not serving. You're at-large and you're sitting in a seat, but you're not serving the seat. So one of the things I want to do is get on council, identify that issue with the man. Say, "Mayor, listen, we are at-large. We're supposed to be dealing with policy changes. We're supposed to be able to make sure that we're supervising the administration activities of this city council." And so, you're right, I intend to definitely identify with that with some other members.
Well, let me ask you this, how you going to deal with Bob Harvey and the Downtown Chamber Club?
Well, you know what, Charles?
Hey, Bob!
Hey, let me tell you, Charles, I would offer to say, "You ain't changed much from the 1980s." You still doing the same thing you do.
Well, listen, my friend, my friend used to be the chairman of the Houston Chamber of Commerce.
Yes.
Al Haynes.
Absolutely.
Okay?
Absolutely.
I don't know why me and Bob can't get along. I used to get along with Al. We called each other and chewed the fat. Not pork though.
Not pork, I got you.
But we chewed the fat. But I don't know what's happening with Bob. Bob, I'mma call you real soon and see if we can go lunch together and see if we can do something. You know, a little better. Let me tell you what happened, I went to C, Bob, they locked me out of the office.
No.
Oh, man, well, I got in the office, but they wouldn't let me see it.
Wouldn't let me see it, yeah. Yeah, I got that.
Okay, I just thought, you know, I'd add a little commentation color and all that, you know?
Same old Charles X White, you ain't changed. Well, let me just say this, that's one of the things that I give a lot of my credit to. You know, over the years of my pastoring child in this city from all denominations and races and ethnicities, I've been able to communicate with everybody.
Yeah.
And I think that the gift and the opportunity that God has given me as a pastor and as a native Houstonian, that I have people that I feel that I can get to certain people and get that opportunity to share with them and make some changes. Because you're right, the chamber in our city, by and large, is, in my personal opinion, has been, have taken on some discriminatory actions that is not favorable to this city. And I think it's wrong. I think it's totally wrong for our city to be looked over. And the chamber, you know, and I'm not speaking negative. I'm not trying to penalize any individual. But you are absolutely right in what you're saying. There needs to be more present. When the last time, I don't know the last time I've seen the Houston City Chamber in my community. I don't think I've ever seen them in a while. So my point is, if you're representing all of the city, then why are you not responding? And especially to some of the city leaders, like yourself, who are out there every day and dealing in involvement, why wouldn't they want to talk to you? They could get a better opinion about what's going on and the needs of that community, not only through me.
And how to fix it.
And how to fix it, not only from an at-large council or a district council member, but a community leader.
Right. Well, let me pose this question to you. The mayor is in charge of the budget?
Yes.
The agenda?
Yes.
And the department heads? It is my opinion that personal politics has crushed tax-based service delivery and it's done on a personal basis. Or the squeaky wheel gets the grease basis. It's morphing into those two dynamics.
Yes.
Okay? I don't think that a city council member ought to be an extension of a department head.
Absolutely.
Because that's what I, how I've seen district council members operate. Instead of concentrating on public policy that moves money to you or from you. And how would you use the public policy tool to improve service delivery that the mayor would have to agree with more than disagree with?
Here's how it ought to be done. First and foremost, we need the mayor or a mayor, whoever that would be, to start thinking more about being inclusive in the representation of this city and the council. We have a charter that gives the mayor that total control. And I think any good mayor, good administrator, we are a city without a city manager. We have a mayor ran position charter set up, and it's been like that for years. Now, Houston has changed, but the charter hasn't changed. And I think it's, I think it's time, Charles, for a mayor who want to be a good leader and love this city, would start thinking about the idea of having shared responsibility, even when it comes to the agenda.
Yeah.
And some, even some of the budget items. Because what it does, all of the negativity that we're hearing now, like pay-to-play and all of that, all that, and I'm not accusing anybody of that. You know, some of it may be false, some of it may be true. I don't know. But I do know this, that you got a council of 16. And the council basically are handcuffed when it comes down to the district as well as the at-large positions on certain things that we want to bring to the agenda. And I think a smart, I think a very great leader skill of a mayor would have some responsibility to say, "You know what? We need to change some of this charter, put some amendments in here" that gives the council an opportunity to bring items to the agenda and then as well as budget items to assure some of the district council members, they have a budget to do some things within that district. But guess what? Even a lot of time, their hands are tied.
It's limited and hands are tied.
Absolutely.
Now, I don't know how much time we have left, but let me try to get into another area.
Okay.
Crime.
Which is my theme.
So what would be your one, two advocacy points about reducing crime that has been occurring in certain spots over and over? Now, recently, in 2014, the DA was advancing, Devin Anderson, was advancing a narrative about a gang injunction. That was in South Union.
Right.
And they were trying to ban gang members, so-called allegedly?
From certain?
From that area.
Right.
Like a two-square-mile area.
Right.
And never come back to that area.
Right.
Now, from my background in police training, I advanced a question in a meeting. Since there are seven accepted styles of policing, I identified three and asked the question, "Where is the data and the research that indicates that neighborhood-oriented policing, hotspot policing, and it's a third one, but I can't remember, it'll come to me, hotspot, neighborhood, and predictive policing?"
Okay.
Those are three of the seven.
Okay.
Where's the data that shows those three did not work? That you have to now create this injunction as a solution?
Which I disagree with.
And they didn't have that data?
That's right.
Okay? Now, because if you progressively use those three, you ought to show a reduction?
Absolutely.
In the crime and the source? And then that means that also in the violence that's perpetrated on the citizens? So what would be your approach with the chief, the community, and the mayor?
Right.
In trying to get some kind of solution matrix with better results than has happened from my point of view?
From your point of view, right.
From 1986 to now?
Okay, well, I love that question, Charles. And in a few minutes, and I will go through it briefly, the theme for my campaign... The theme for my campaign is let's keep Houston safe. And when I first came up with the theme, my campaign team said, Willie, why would you want to put that as a theme? And I say, you know why? Because if the city is not safe, then we can't make no money. We can't prosper. Everything deals with safety. That's one of the reasons why, whether people want to or not, we have to give credit to Mayor Lee P. Brown. Not only did Lee P. Brown bring a new and a courageous approach to helping the city, but he also brought a professionalism when it came to policing. It's two things that our crime, um, has to deal with as relates to the city. One is patrol and the other is protection. That's two different things. Patrolling as a police department and protecting is another one. So based on the premise that you talked about, we need to, we need to think about keeping our city safe. And what I mean by that is three things. We need more police. That's number one. We need more police. During my, uh, tenure, as you know, I served twenty years at the Greater St. Paul Baptist Church. And, uh, from there, I was called to a church in Chicago. I served four years in Chicago on the south side in one of the largest churches in the city of Chi- Chicago. Uh, and so I know what both of these cities, city number four and city number three, I've served in both large cities. So when people want to ask me about how, what my plan is, I, I, I got a good experience on how to deal with both. Two different dynamics of two different cities with two different communities. But you need more police. Houston got five thousand, and we are larger than Chicago, and Chicago got thirteen thousand. We got six hundred and sixty-nine square miles of space. Chicago got about two hundred and thirty-nine square miles. So the difference is, we need more policing in the city. That's number one. Number two, we need community policing, just like what Mayor, uh, Brown did, community policing. It changed it from several reasons. When crime goes on in our communities, particularly in the black and brown communities, we think about the crime and not, but, and never focus on the cause and the effect of the crime and how to eliminate the increase of crime. Crime's gonna increase wherever there's prosperity. I always say that. Wherever there is, wherever there's prosperity, crime is gonna follow. Whether you live in Memorial, whether you live in the Galleria, whether you live in Third Ward. So we need community policing. The third thing, which is the final question that everybody asks me when they get to that, how you gonna pay for it? Well, zero-based budgeting. Zero-based budgeting means for me that number one, we start from the bottom of the budget and we go upward. We can eliminate some of the waste that's in our budget. Now, I noticed that oftentimes when people talk about how we pay for things, there are many methods that people got. I'm sure other council members got other methods about how we pay for stuff. But here's the deal. The reality of it is, let's start with what we don't have to pay for. There's a waste in over five billion, Charles, dollar budget. There's some waste there.
Mayor Parker talked about a dedicated lockbox for the drainage fee. And soon as she got a chance to bust up, bust in it and pay, pay for non-lockbox drainage
Absolutely.
and whatever, she jumped right on in it.
Absolutely. And see, and that's one of the reasons why, I go back to your earlier question about the ability for council to identify and address some of these issues. When, if the council has some of these power, we don't have an administrator that would tell us one thing and do something else. Now, when that was told by Mayor Parker, when that was told to us, the council couldn't stop it nowhere the other. And the council didn't know whether she went into the box or went in, if she didn't go in the box.
Well, they haven't been able to find the box.
Absolutely.
But they know she hired six hundred more people and all that other stuff that happened.
That's right. And, and this is the reason why I'm saying there needs to be some charter changing. I think it would be bold of a mayor leader to say, you know what, I think you're right, Willie. I think we need to bring a more bold approach and get in the council uh, a voice on the, on these budget items as well as the, um, uh, the items that would go on, on the agenda. And I, and I think that's one way to direct us. But safety, Charles, we've got to make sure our city is safe. Not only for the people who stand at the corners on many of our streets, not only protect the resident, protect those people as well. You know, I'm, we, we need more ways to help the homeless people.
Well, let me ask you this, and I'm, oh, this is just a point of, uh, reference.
Sure.
The mayoral system that we have now, strong form of government, we owe that to the gray fox, the silver fox, the one and the only, the one person that did it all. The eleven-term man, Oscar Holcomb.
Holcomb, yeah.
So y'all look up Oscar Holcomb, Holcomb, eleven-term mayor, and he did a whole lot of stuff. Some of it good, some of it bad. I'm not gonna talk about either. But look here, tell us why we ought to vote for you, uh, and who you are and what you're running for. And then we're gonna wrap it up for this particular show.
All right. Thank you, Charlie. I'm Reverend Willie R. Davis. Uh, I'm a native Houstonian. I've been in this city all my life, other than short tenure time, as I stated, uh, to go into the military and a short tenure in Chicago, but I came back home. Uh, I, I think that most of us here and many of you in the city, uh, know me and know what I do. I want to represent this city as a servant, not just as a politician, not just as an individual sitting in a seat. But I want to be a servant to this city. They need to vote for me because I know my city, I love my city. And I'm very compassionate about, uh, the way Houston looks. Everybody talks about how diverse we are, how multi-ethnic we are. That's a great thing. But the reality of it is, we don't want to turn into a multi-ethnic city and be segregated. We need to stay integrated. And voting for me would make our city a more integrated, positive, growing city. And we need to keep our city safe. So I, I'm asking for the support of the City of Houston to vote me in. We don't need a person that nobody sees them only at election time. We need a person that's gonna represent the city at-large, you know. Uh, and I think that we need to get away from this idea that an at-large member can't come in the district. So I want to represent that and be the next, uh, uh, city council at-large position number two for the City of Houston.
Well, we want to thank you for joining us today on Community Views and Solutions. Special edition, we're dealing with local elections, national elections, and the census. We're also gonna talk about some codes. You remember the black codes? Well, there are some political codes we want you to know and be aware of. So we're signing off right now. This is Charles X White, your host of Community Views and Solutions. We'll see you next time on this journey.